Okay, morning everybody. I think we're probably about ready to start. So I just want to start with the welcoming and housekeeping arrangements. So thanks everybody for attending. Just a reminder to everybody to make sure your phones are on silent so we don't disturb the meeting. And just in case, to make you aware that there isn't a fire test planned for today. So if there is a fire alarm going off, we need to take direction from the staff and meet outside in Tudor Square. So I'm now just going to ask people to introduce themselves, but I probably ought to start with myself. So my name's Sue Alston, I'm councillor in Fulwood and I'm deputy chair of this committee and I'm chairing today because the chair is unable to attend. So I shall start. Mary?
My name's councillor Mary Lee and I'm a councillor for Darnall Wood.
Councillor Mark Jones, Burn Green Ward.
Councillor Sean Admire, Richards, Mallow Ward.
Councillor Brian Lodge, Burley Ward.
Councillor Mike Lee, West Echelfield.
Councillor Christian Gilligan, Cobo, Hillsborough Ward.
Councillor Joe Otten, Dornetown.
Thank you. And can I now just ask the officers to introduce themselves?
David Hollis, interim director of legal and governance.
J. Bell, Democrat Service Officer.
Jason Dees, Democratic Services.
I'm Emily Standbrook Shaw, Policy and Improvement Officer.
Laurie Brennan, I'm head of policy and partnerships.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the apologies for absence.
Chair received two apologies for absence. One from councillor Julie Grok and Sean Admire, which is here as substitute, and also Mick Rooney.
Can I also mention that councillor Penny Baker has apologised that she will be late for this meeting, she's travelling from another meeting. Item number three is exclusion of public and press, and there are no items, I'm told, that are appropriate for that. And then item four is declarations of interest. So does any member have anything that they wish to declare an interest in the item on the agenda? Okay, thank you. So we then move on to item number five, which is minutes of the previous meeting. So I'll take them page by page. Page number nine, councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry to inform the committee that since the last meeting, Mr Alan Cooley, who put that question, has sadly passed away. He was a, I just wanted to mention it because obviously he's recording the minutes here. He was a resident of Dornetown and obviously active in the community in his own particular idiom. So I just thought I'd mention that, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Yeah, that had been noted and we do want to send our condolences to his family and friends from this committee, so thank you. Our next page, page 10. Page 11. I actually have an amendment for page 11, which is on the second paragraph down, and it was actually the South West Slack that did the first pilot hybrid meeting. Then page 12. 13. 14. 15. 16. 17. 18. And 19. Do I assume then that we're all happy to agree those as a correct record of the last meeting? I would take silence as a sense, so we'll agree those as a correct record of the previous meeting, thank you. So item number six.
Chair, sorry. Sorry, I know we don't really have matters arising, but I just wanted to ask how the pilot went, or has it not happened yet, the one for South West?
I think there were some issues identified that are being worked on. And we have done it again since, but there's sort of more technical issues rather than anything else, but otherwise it worked very well. I'm looking at Joe, in case he wanted to disagree with me. So item number six is public questions and petitions. So we have received some, several public questions from Ruth Hubbard. Ruth isn't able to be here today. The questions themselves are really quite long, so what I've agreed is that Laurie Brennan will read the actual question at the end of the question, if you see what I mean, and provide an answer. The full question will go in the minutes, and if anybody would like to see the full question at this stage, I have them here, or they will be available afterwards.
Thank you, Chair. So there's several questions from Ruth Hubbard, and they're actually helpful and complimentary to the agenda of the meeting today, particularly connected to the six-month review. The first question was really about, actually connected to the minutes from last time, and Ruth raised some comments about some of the wording in papers that myself and Alex brought to the previous meeting before the last one. We've made sure in the minutes today that we've addressed those concerns that Ruth raised. So the question was, really, as she said, that I trust and ask that there will be no repeat of overclaims further down the road, and that the review exercise is somehow about co-design or about community steering and shaping key building blocks. Our response to that, Chair. Our ambition is that community involvement is central to our culture and ways of working across the whole council. We recognise, however, this is going to be something that will require concerted work and effort over a period of time, and is not something that we have embedded in time for this review. Again, I think this will come up in the conversations as we go through. This doesn't take away from our desire to hear from communities about their views on the system and how it's working as part of the review. So that's question one, Chair. The second question was at an A and B, and I'm going to try and take those together because it sort of alludes to similar issues really. So I know, she said, I know question seven of the meeting, item seven on the meeting today is about planning for the six-month review of new governance, and this appears to be a verbal report. Does this provide an adequate opportunity for members of the public and stakeholders to pose the questions about the governance review plans? And part B of that question was really about asking whether the committee is interested in a series of alternative metrics that relate to its governance principles, and Ruth's offering to support, to help with that, as long as it's going to be worth her while, essentially. You'll remember from the paper that Alex Pollock brought to the last meeting, that there was a series of metrics associated with how our governance system works, everything from papers published on time to a number of kind of output sorts of metrics. So what our response to the two questions really around the governance review here is as follows. The intention for, is in item seven, is to have a conversation with members today in the form of a workshop with members of the committee, to consider the scope of the review and the key lines of inquiry that we should be undertaking before agreeing the final scope and launching the review at the next meeting on the 10th of November. We'd of course welcome insight from stakeholders and citizens ahead of the scope being finalised on the 10th of November meeting, and indeed citizens and stakeholders are key to the review, and we'll make sure that there are a range of opportunities for people to contribute throughout. I think we'll come to that as we go through the slide pack later on. It was deliberately done like this so that we've got an opportunity to have a discussion about it in public before we bring back something more formal next time. Chair, moving on, the next question was really about, is about the governance change exercise, and Ruth has offered a range of thoughts about things we should look at as part of that governance review, in particular the sort of public participation element of it, and particularly around citizen rights and improving access to information and participation. So Ruth's question directly is, as part of its review, will the committee at least consider a small dedicated look at this one issue, that is citizens' rights and improving access to information and participation, even if it is within the very limited footprint of the citizens' rights that apparently exist within the constitution and develop an improvement plan? In response, Chair, yes, elements of this are picked up as part of the draft scope for the governance committee are looking at today, for example, looking at public questions and accessibility of information about decisions, and these have been suggested by members as key areas to explore. I think we should probably come back to this as part of the conversation we're about to have later on, if that's okay, Chair. Okay, so the next question forward, or the next section was really about citizen and community stakeholders and the sort of accessibility and involvement engagement in the city. As part of that, Ruth asked a question which is really about what's happened to the work that Involve were doing and what's happened to their final report. This committee received a rather generic interim report, but the last I heard of their final report was going to come out for comments, a range of stakeholders who participated in the consultation, and then the final report was to come to this committee, so where's the report? In response, Chair, we accept and apologise for the delay on this, and I should actually point out, this is on me, this one, so I will accept that this is actually my challenge here. And I should also stress that this has not been caused by Involve at all, they did, they have produced a draft final report based on all the conversations we had with stakeholders around the time of the transition to the committee system. And they did that within agreed timescales and along with a series of case studies which builds and adds depth to the headline summary report which was brought here and taken to full council. It's purely been around limited officer capacity. And also that, obviously, last time we discussed at the committee that we were trying to refocus the work that Involve were doing to give us some real support and capability development for the work we're doing in Sheffield City Council about trying to improve our approach to involvement and engagement and empowerment of communities. So my commitment here is just that we will share the report with stakeholders this month, and we will do that. So the content, and the content will be vital to informing the involvement and participation that the committee wants to focus on. So that's my commitment on that one, I think. It's just, it's been my pressures and my capacity. And just finally, Ruth asks how much we've spent on Involve and what the outputs and outcomes are known. She said, I always felt this money, given the expertise in the city, might have been better spent in Sheffield, especially as we have a new community wealth building policy, but also what has been the value of Involve to the city and its citizens' communities? To date, we, as you'll remember from the budget, we allocated around £100k for the engagement part of this. We only spent around £25 of that, it's slightly less. I haven't got, I couldn't give you the concrete figure because at the time I've had to produce the answers on this one. But it's a round £25k, and as we discussed at the last governance committee meeting, there's a huge amount for us to do as a council and with communities to ensure that we're genuinely connected to and involving communities in the decisions we make, the services and connects to our service and all our work as well. It's clearly unrealistic that Involve's work alone was going to, no matter how strong that is, was going to completely change our culture and everything, but as we set out in the last governance committee, we want to see this as part of a real change we're undertaking, and we need to listen to communities and also build, and bring, also, sorry, also bring in the best quality expertise from Involve and other external expertise to build our skills and build our culture of community involvement in Sheffield. So in summary, Chair, I take Ruth's point on this, some of it is about, been about our capacity and about the shifting of the committee system happening at the same time. The commitment to supporting and developing community involvement and empowerment in how we go about our business in Sheffield City Council is critical, and Involve will continue to support on that.
Thank you very much. And as I said, those will be printed along with the full questions in the minutes, so thank you for that. So we now move to item number seven, which is the main sort of bulk of today's meeting, which is trying to move the plan and arrange a plan for the six-month review of governance, which is due to start formally in November. So at the end of this, there will be some recommendations. So the idea today is that we discuss and comment on the proposed approach to the review, in particular the structure and timing, and any extra issues that haven't been identified that we would like to raise and make sure are included. That we agree to set up a working group of members to meet and support the ongoing progress. We can discuss that as we go through. And subject to these comments, agree on the approach to the review and commission offices to start to put together the necessary arrangements, and request for the interim director of legal and governance to produce a report on the more detailed arrangements of the review for the November meeting. So I'm going to ask Emily, I think you're doing the, or Laurie's doing the presentation, I think you should all have a copy to look at as well.
Thank you, Chair. You're back to my dulcet Lancasterian tones again. But it's a change where Alex used to just speak in all these meetings, the assistant head of governance used to just kind of, used to joke that he would just talk for hours in these meetings, and that's now you've got me instead. So the intention here was to have a conversation today. The reason it's kind of semi-structured is I'm not going to stand up and present these slides to you. What I think we're trying to do here is have a conversation so that we are thinking about the parameters of the review, what we want to look at as a council, and how we want to go about doing that to an extent. So at the end of this, we can, myself and Emily will work on bringing this back together in a form of a more comprehensive paper, which we'll bring to the next governance committee, which will ultimately sort of launch the activity on the review. We said we'd do that within six months, and that's obviously around the November time. So what I'm going to do is just talk you through the context of this, and then probably after the majority of the slides in here, we'll pause and open it up really for conversation and questions, because we need to ensure that what we are focusing are the things that members really care about, that think we need to look at as part of the system review, but also that what opportunities we have to bring in officer perspectives into that as people are operating and working within the system, but also then citizens and stakeholders as well, who have an absolutely valid and important voice in all this, and clearly looking at the timelines for turning that work around as well. Could you just move it on? I'm going to have to find some sort of waving mechanism to move the slides on. So as the Chair just outlined, I think the real focus in this section, in this item, is to consider the scope of the review, what we need to focus on and how we undertake the review, agree with members how governance committee want to work as part of that review, and the suggestion in the recommendations that we set up a working group, and then that we launch the review of the governance committee at the next meeting. This just sets out something that we didn't have probably when we did the committee system review, and it's been developed over the summer with members in the Strategy and Resources Committee particularly, but this sets out a new set of strategic goals for the organisation. And I think it's important context that we're trying to set ourselves some strategic organisational goals for Sheffield City Council, but also the governance committee's work and the review forms part of this in a lot of ways, particularly around the fair, inclusive and empowered community aspect of this, but also particularly being a good council, going about our business in an effective and open and transparent way, and obviously empowering and involving elected members and staff and citizens as part of that. So it's just contextual in many ways. So the next slide, this is what we set out in the paper to full council in February, which ultimately was the thing that initiated the decision to set up the committee system. Just want to draw your attention to the content in the box that's in pink really, or in purple, that we committed to conduct in the review of the system in November this year, and provide full council with insight into what's worked well alongside any recommendations for change. So this will take into account changes to local and national context, include our previously agreed strategic aims and design principles in its assessment criteria, and also we actively seek to use it, to engage citizens and residents and stakeholders and members and officers in judging against those criteria. So this was reaffirmed in the paper we brought to the June governance committee, but what that paper did was allude back to those particular aspects of the review. I think what we're trying to do here is add some meat to those bones really, so we only talked really at very high level terms about the areas to focus on. So if you take the second bullet point on there, really that's looking at the whole system. So what I want to do is try and add some aspects to that that we want to, we really want to focus on. So, so these were those, these were what we set out in the last governance committee paper from June 30th of this year. We said we'd look at these three areas, and I'm just going to pick on these individually on the coming slides. So the first one was really, in my head, is about almost everything, so we need to be quite clear about what aspects we're looking at within the system. The second bit is about public and community participation, but I think that's also about accessibility, about information availability and information sharing. And then the last one was, is something we may want to discuss. My personal perspective on this is that how the governance system interacts with the local and national landscape, we may want to consider whether this is still relevant time, which time we're focused on right now, but we can come back to that in a couple of minutes' time.
Can I just, Mark would like to...
Thanks, Sue. Thanks, Laurie. When I'm looking at this document and going through it, it feels very much like it's a town hall-centric approach, rightly or wrongly, that's just the feel it gets. Part of the thing that I was reflecting on, and this comes back to questions, albeit somewhat from a distance, of those not involved in those community works who are, I'll say ignorant for lack of a better word. So for me, what I don't see in here is any best practice suggestions as what we're currently doing. For me, if I were to go to my, put my ward hat on, which is what I'm here for really, I would go to Page Hall, and most people don't like to talk about Page Hall because it's problematic. However, I would say that the work being done in Page Hall by, I'll name the officer anyway, I don't care, James Richards and his team, is exceptional. They've done voice work, they've done engagement work, but at no stage do I see what they've done as a case study of what is ongoing and is being achieved and is, in my opinion, exemplar of what we as a council should be doing, of being out of the town hall and in our communities and engaging directly with those communities, and more importantly, not just the officers engaging, but the community engaging and giving something back. So for me, I'd like to see that kind of portfolio of where we do stuff being built up. I know it's difficult, but for me, I think that would certainly be easier. And to some of those that would decry the process that we're going through in the council and its abilities to engage with the public, I think the work that's being done in that locality specifically would address some of those questions. And without disrespecting those that are raising those points, they're not part of that community, they're never going to be part of that community, so they can't understand what's going on currently. And I'm conscious that sometimes by hiding our lights under the bushel, we let ourselves down and then portray a false opinion to those who would otherwise be critical of us, rightly or wrongly. So, yeah, I really would like to see some best practice being brought into this, so that we as members can actually say, yeah, that's good and that's rubbish, or I agree with what they're achieving, I'm not sure that they're achieving what they should be, and maybe champion that for the rest of the council. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Jones, fantastic comments. I'm aware of the work in Page Hall as well, and I think there is some fantastic examples of things that we are doing at very local levels, to talk to communities and engage communities in the things that are happening in their areas and their neighbourhoods, and genuinely make them part of how things are changing in their environment and addressing the issues they've got. I think that's exactly it, and that certainly as part of the how, about how we go about doing this, capturing case studies is a really good example, because I think there's always, we've talked about this here at various points. There's a real risk that we only see public participation through the lens of if you turn up like Richard, that's turned up to the meeting today, to engage in the actual physical meeting itself, or post public questions, or put petitions in. Obviously, the day-to-day work of Sheffield City Council and our interaction with communities across the city, your activity as members in all your wards and in every lack area, is almost probably unquantifiable, it's huge. And what we need to do is probably bring that perspective and some really good examples of that. So some of the work that Involve have already done is to look at some, from across the city, so not just for the city council, some examples of really good practice, and some of that relates to us, some of it relates to other organisations as well. But as part of what Involve are supporting us on now is about how do we raise the bar internally as well, so that that sort of fantastic example of practice is more consistent. And I think that's sometimes where we get, we don't get it right, I think. And I think there's a, it's almost like, it sounds boring, but it's almost like a quite a big mapping exercise to understand, how do we do this well? Where have we got opportunities in Sheffield City Council across the officer base, but also where do we need to improve and how do we build capacity and capabilities within that? One of the things we might find through this is that, so I've heard comments from members and colleagues as well, that through work plans for the committees, that we're still not getting that oversight of what participation and involvement and engagement is happening across work plan items. And I think that might just be the sort of a thin end of the telescope, if you will. I think we're not quite capturing the full, the comprehensive page of work that's going on, but thank you, because I think that's exactly something we'll pick up, and we'll pick it up on the second question as well. What I'm trying to do here, and Emily's been fantastic in helping set this out, is trying to just create a framework within which we can drop, we can drop bits in, because the review, as we'll come on to on this next slide, is it's about the system itself, but we shouldn't just narrow ourselves to think about just the aspects of that, we need to think about that broader perspective as well. Thank you. If it's okay, I'll just, I'll carry on to the next bit and we'll start working through the aspects of this. The next slide, what I've tried to do is, it sounds quite negative to bring this up at a certain point like this, but obviously what we're trying to do is create a framework within which we're operating, and also say probably what's not fully on the table right now, or sort of say, this is where we're trying to focus our attentions. So what I've suggested on this slide is the areas where we probably were not going to be looking at in the six-month review, and I'll run through them and then open for, if this feels right, to members. So the first one is about whole system redesign. I mean, obviously we've been through a year-long piece of work with support from offices across the organisation and members across the organisation, and engaging citizens as part of that, to design a committee system that works for us. So we're not talking about wholesale tearing that up, I don't think here. What we're talking about is learning how it's, how that is bedding in after six months, what it feels like to councillors, what it feels like to officers, what it feels like to citizens, and learning from that to understand where we can improve. I think we always said in this room actually, that the version we implemented in May was never going to be 100% right, it was sort of our version 1.0, and actually, that's going to iterate and develop as time goes on. So that's the first point. The second point is about full council itself. I'm aware that members are looking at the operation of the meeting itself in terms of the operation of the actual meeting in its form. We probably, we should probably use this to complement that piece of work, so, but really focus on the constitutional and governance role that full council plays within the system as opposed to the actual operation of the meeting itself, if you will. But I'm happy to be challenged on that as well. The second, the third point is around local area committees. This review is not to review local area committees, but I think there is something about the interrelationship between central committees and the local area committees. So I think we should pick that up, particularly about the balance of decision-making and then their respective roles within Sheffield's governance. And then just finally, we talked quite a bit at various points and had public submissions and independent perspectives through the governance inquiry that we did, around the electoral system, i.e. first past the post, and also the cycle, i.e. that we are elected in thirds as opposed to all live elections every four years. On those two points, as we said through the review, the voting system's not a local decision-making power really, it's a duty on government to set that up, to make changes in that, so we can't really get into that. The other point around the electoral cycle is actually subject to a budget proposal that Strategy and Resources Committee are looking at as well, so I think, I just want to keep that separate whilst there may be some comments around the cycles, the actual decision sits elsewhere for the minute. Does that feel okay in terms of ever trying to outline what's probably we're not looking at here?
Shad? I just wanted to clarify on two, because I would, wouldn't I? The separate review, is that formal or informal, Laurie?
I may have to divert to Jason to help me on this one.
Thanks, Mike, Chair. The WIPs are doing the review of governance of the council meeting and how that operates. So he can report into this committee if the committee would like that. So they're getting some oversight of that, if that's what the committee wants to agree.
Could I just ask whether they will be consulting or talking to the Lord Mayor about that?
Yes, I think it would be very useful for us to involve the Lord Mayor, Deputy Lord Mayor as well, if that's okay.
I think that was always the intention.
Any other comments or questions on this so far? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is the first, trying to pick up the first question, which I've kept in the purple box on the left-hand side here. I'm sorry the text is a little small on this, but I was trying to contain it on to as few slides as I possibly could make it, really. But obviously, we'll publish these slides afterwards and share them round. This tries to set out a broad structure for that first question. So effectively, I'll just run through the purple headings. So this is trying to structure the review and the areas we want to look at. So firstly, the overall structure of the committee system, i.e. the policy committee areas of responsibility. Do they feel right? Does any need clarifying? The number of policy committees, the interplay between the regulatory committees, things like licensing and planning, how we are managing complex cross-cutting policy issues, which in a complex policy environment, things like climate change, things like poverty, don't necessarily fit squarely within one committee itself. And that relationship between and interconnection with local area committees that I alluded to earlier. The second one is around committee working practice, experiences from citizens, members and officers, the respective workloads and scale of agendas across the committees, because I know there's a difference between some of the committees themselves, it's the scales different. The balance of decisions, policy development and review, because obviously, everything contained within the system, so policy development and making decisions, but also things like scrutiny with a small s and a policy review within that. The urgent decision-making process and the volume of urgent decisions, so how many we've undertaken and is that working effectively? Pre-meets and briefings, is that working effectively as well? The chairing and co-chairing arrangements, in particular like taking an assessment of whether the co-chairing is proving effective and a useful tool in this. And the involvement of group spokespeople and deputies within the committees. Next bit is around capacity and resource, and we should link back to our Equality Impact Assessment as part of this. So thinking about the impacts on officer, member and citizen capacity and our community involuntary sector, who often interact with our committees and the decision-making we undertake. What does that feel like in terms of wellbeing and also the impact on workloads? Officer capacity and cost, so yes, capacity and the ability to turn around the content in time and make sure that members are fully briefed and have everything they need to consider items and issues, but also the cost of that in terms of providing that support. Decision-making and delegation is obviously clearly a really important point there, is the balance right? And is it working effectively? And then finally, there's probably a number of constitutional issues which may flow out of the things above. But also, I know that colleagues in legal and governance are also looking at how we can improve and develop the constitution as we go through this as well. I'm just going to pause there. Does this feel like a good starting point? I'm no doubt this will iterate and will build on this list as a starting area. I'm happy to take any suggestions and content for areas we should look at. What I should also say on this is that I think my view is, and I'm happy to be steered by Chair and the rest of the committee really, is we should probably test this framework before we go ahead and launch a review. So almost have a conversation, have an open conversation with members internally, with officers and with stakeholders to test whether this feels right, what's working, what's not, and are there any other areas we should add to that, this kind of scope within the parameters we've set out. We can obviously undertake that before we get to November, and we can do that quite quickly, I think. But I welcome your steering thoughts on any of that.
Jo?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, thank you for that. I think it's pretty good. I have a couple of comments on a couple of things. I'm not going to go into what we should do on all these things, I think that'd be probably short. Are we clear, I suppose, with the question? To what extent we're looking at the rules? And to what extent we're looking at things that might be governed by a political agreement between parties in Home Council? I'm thinking in particular of the roles of group spokespeople, because that is very much as it appears. It's not really written down in the rules what the group spokespeople do very much, but it is really important. Certainly this year, and if next year is home again, then it will be next year. Their role is extremely important. Certainly on my committee, I involve the deputy chair and the spokesperson kind of equally. There's no real distinction between the two. The deputy chair will get to chair the meeting occasionally if I'm not well, because I don't happen to have a co-chair. I mean, even on some of the committees, deputy chairs don't even really have that role. So it's pretty clear to me that in practical terms, there's very little distinction between the two. And obviously, that's not really recognised in the rules. And maybe it shouldn't be recognised in the rules, but it is very important to how we operate at the moment. Is that, you know, are we, you know, so actually, can you answer that first and I might come back? To what extent are we looking at operations as opposed to rules?
Thank you, councillor Wotton. I think we're probably going to capture quite a lot of that. So there's a contrast between the system and the rules and what's in the governance in our constitution and what we've set up in the system and our behaviours in terms of how we operate it. I've no doubt we'll get a mix of both, and as a committee, we'll probably need to work through how that interplays and to what extent that is a systemic thing that we need to change through our constitution. Or actually, are there learning points for us as officers and for members about how we operate and where we can strengthen? So we might find some, I think there's a distinction between how each committee is working. You'll know better than I do, certainly. But we might find some really good practice in, say, for the Transport Committee versus the way it's in the Street Team Committee. And we might want to, I'm not picking on your committee, councillor Wotton, of course, but we might find some good practice from either way, which we then want to try and share or try and embed in the ways of working elsewhere, because it's a strength for the system. So we're probably going to pick up both. And in how we report this, we might want to think how we structure that into the report we put back to full council and the recommendations that we developed.
I think David would like to come in on that as well.
Yeah, I suppose in a way that the role of the group spokesperson could be covered by both. I mean, the constitution does deal with the role of chairs, and it may be that we look at the role of chairs as to how they want to involve group spokespeople. Or the alternative is we look at including something in there about how group spokespeople should operate.
Jo, do you want to come back? And then I've got Shonad. Oh, sorry. Emily, and then...
Thanks. I just wanted, I don't know if any of you were involved in the first governance review that we did back in 2019 in the run-up to the referendum. And one of the really key messages that came through that piece of work was about, it's not so much the system as the cultures and behaviours and ways of working in it. And I think we're probably, they're equally as important. And so I think we will need to pick up all of this in the review. The solutions to them will be different, but I think it's really important for us to bear in mind that there will be some things about the system that can be fixed with a constitutional change and others that are much more about how we work and culture and behaviours and ways of working.
Thanks, yeah, thanks for those answers. I mean, how do I put this? I'm not convinced actually that getting the best out of the group spokespeople in the system that we have in a Home Council is so much a cultural problem as it is having a clear political agreement between the groups and then sticking to it. And yeah, so, and that is, obviously, going to that territory makes the governance review process a little bit, possibly treading on the toes of a subsequent political agreement between subsequent groups, or indeed, treading on the toes of a majority party wanting to do things a different way. So yes, it is, obviously, the culture is vitally important. But I'm not entirely sure that is exactly the question for us here. And I think it might be useful for this group to kind of pre-negotiate the next round of Home Council operating agreements kind of thing through this process. We need to be clear that's what we're doing, if that's what we're doing. I think it'd be very useful, it might be slightly odd kind of governance-wise to do that, I don't know.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm happy to leave that as a comment to that point.
I've got quite a list now, so it's got me shoneed.
I think there's two things. One, if you have a Home Council and that continues, then there's a model at the LGA whereby they have a chair, a vice, a deputy chair, and then the spokesperson would be called the vice chair. And that gives them a position which is more than just saying spokesperson. It actually says they have a role. But if you have a non-Home Council, you have a different situation, don't you? So I don't know whether you'd want two sets of rules, one for Home and one for not Home. I think those are things that you might have to consider as part of the review.
Thank you, Shad. Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Sue. Not wanting to disagree with the Chair of my committee in any way whatsoever, I'm not sure I necessarily am. I'm not entirely sure about the function of the spokesperson and how they're bound to a collective view of those committees necessarily. And one thing I'm kind of mindful of is, I know this would never occur, Jo, but what happens if I was opposed to something that was being suggested by yourself or officers? How do we articulate that when the committees are Home and will have differences of opinions? I'm a little bit concerned, I don't know how this works out in terms of, if anything, the process of involving more councillors and giving more councillors voice is away from getting rid of those gatekeepers. And I don't know whether we're missing that with some of those mechanisms that are put in there. But I don't know, I'm not quite sure. Yeah, like I say, I've not had a situation where I'd want to disagree with my committee chair or anything like that. So I'm just unsure as to how that would play out in the wider context, if you know what I mean.
Do you just want to make a very quick comment there, Jo?
Yes, thank you, just out on that. I mean, obviously, why would we ever disagree, Mark? But I think you're touching on actually quite an interesting point, is that the, yes, I agree, we're supposed to be getting rid of the gatekeepers, we're having discussions in open. But we seem to have set up a system that does revolve around spokespersons, chairs, deputy chairs and pre-meets and pre-briefings and pre-discussions, where, yeah, maybe the most interesting discussions aren't being held in open and the decisions maybe really aren't being held in open, that we're receiving reports to committees that are going to be agreed every time. And that, I'm sure, was not the intention, but that does seem to be possibly where we've ended up. And that's maybe another thing to add to the list, Laurie, is do we really have to do that? And can we not deliver what people thought they were voting for in the referendum in a slightly more earnest way?
Dial?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, sorry, looking at the scope, I think there's a couple of gaps really around the timeliness of the decision-making and the efficiency. You know, it says officer capacity and cost, but just running the whole system, does it involve greater cost, which is an important consideration at this time? You know, we have a cost of living crisis, we're picking services to the bone. And I think that least needs some reference in there.
Do you want to come back on that?
Yeah, of course, yeah, exactly. Thank you, councillor Hirst, I think that's, there's an important consideration as part of the transition to committees piece of work. There was a really comprehensive, huge appendices with lots and lots, all the costings in, and like an assessment against number of committees versus officer time. And so we should reflect back on that, and we'll be getting some support from colleagues in business change who effectively did all the analysis for that for us. So we'll bring that back as part of the review for members, because it's important, particularly in the context of the financial challenge we've got.
Thank you. Jason, I think you want to...
Thanks, Chair. Just a particular point on group spokespersons. The remuneration panel is doing some work and has asked to build up a draft of a role description for group spokesperson, so we could feed that into the work we're doing. So there's some common understanding about the sort of what's happening in practice, so we can build that into the role description. Thanks.
Thank you. Just a very quick comment from me. I think this is obviously something we're going to come back to as we go through the detail of exactly how the chairs and vice-chairs are working. And I think we really are going to need to make sure we've got all the constitution with us when we're having that discussion, so we know what is actually written down and what is just something that we've adopted and think we've written down that we haven't, that we can move on.
Laurie, do you want to?
Thank you, Chair. That's really helpful. Obviously, we're not saying that's the end of it, but I have no doubt there'll be things that we will develop and add to as we start the piece of work. What we were intending to do, if this is okay by the committee and particularly the Chair as well, Emily and myself will do a small piece of work now to try and test with the wider group of members, but also some officers as well, to just do the similar exercise where you say, does this feel about right? What's working well, what isn't? And then ensure that that's informed by the wider group of 84 councillors, but also some of the officers that are involved in the system. And we'll do something similar with stakeholders and members of the public as well. So as part of the huge piece of work we did around transition, there was a quite significant mailing list of people who were interested and came to our events and things like that. So we'll reshare it with people to ask them, are there things that are on this list that you want to look at? Are there things that are missing? So we'll do that.
Mike, I think you wanted to...
Thanks, Chair. A couple of things I think I'd like to pull out in addition to what's there. One is, is the role of task and finish groups actually operating? Is it understood and is it being used? Which is one issue for me. The second thing is, have we got the working relationship right between strategic resources and policy committees? So are things flowing through from policy to strategic resources, which was the original plan? And is that working? And the only thing I think we should do as an outcome from this review is we need to reinforce with officers and councillors how the system works. Because I think lots of people are finding a feat with this, and we really need to go back and make sure that there's good clarity after this review on how we're going to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie, do you want to?
That's really helpful, Mike. Councillor Leary, I've added it to the list as well, because I think that's really useful, particularly the interplay between committees and between S and R and the wider policy committees. And yes, task and finish groups, I haven't captured that either, so that's a really good one to add. And then there is an opportunity to reaffirm the sort of the concepts and the approach we were trying to get embedded as part of this, and that's a really good opportunity with the review. And we might want to think about, not right now, but as we go through it, products as well. What are the things we're producing? It's not just a report to full council, there's more to it than that. So we might want to think about that together as we work through this. Thank you.
Any other comments at this stage, or shall we move to the next one? Okay.
Okay, the next slide is around the participation elements of this. And particularly, I've tried to draw out four areas, but in groups' questions, in the public questions to start with, there's all the content in this which we can add to and is actually really helpful, particularly around citizen rights, and that connects to the constitution as well. So we'll certainly add that to the list. So this picks out four areas really. One is around the sort of practice to date around citizen engagement, particularly in committees. But I think, taking councillor Jones's point, we should try and capture that. It might be quite hard to measure whether the development of the committee system itself has led to us being different in how we all practise our community life. has led to us being different in how we all practise at community level, but in the narrative that supports it, we need to recognise that the committees themselves are not the be-all and end-all of public engagement activity, so we need to play that through. But particularly in here, has the development of policy committees and the wider structure increased or enabled greater participation in that decision-making process? We probably need to hone that sort of area of inquiry particularly. And we need to look at what activities have been carried out, but also how stakeholders are being involved in the work of those committees as well to date. I've had some comments on this already from some members, saying that one of the chat and things we'll come on to in a future slide really is that we are at a very early stage of the committee system operation as well. I'm conscious that you're into about round two of meetings, and therefore, some of the things that are on the work plans were on work plans as we came into the system. And so some of that behaviour and practice might not be fully in place yet, but it doesn't mean to say we shouldn't reflect on it. The second point really is around some of the more formal routes, things like public questions and petitions, and how responsive we are, how we handle those, how we create channels for people to put those in, and how comprehensive answers are. We need to look at that. There's an equality and diversity and inclusion aspect to this, as there should be, but particularly, I think, I was particularly looking at the accessibility of committee content. And we did quite a bit of work with our Sheffield Quality Partnership as we were building up to the kind of development of the model in May, talking about how we ensure we enable people to best access the meetings themselves in physical terms, but also virtual sense, and also comment and contribute to those sessions. So that could pick up everything from co-opting and everything else as well. And then just finally around communication and information availability, again, alludes quite directly to some of the questions Ruth asked, but is that, how is the availability and accessibility of information about committee meetings? Are we communicating it effectively? Can you track a decision for where it started and where it's going to end up and when that decision's made? We need to probably just reassess that as part of it, because it was something that we talked about as part of the initial proposal. I have no doubt members have all the comments on this, but similarly, sort of open to ideas and thoughts.
I've got Christine first.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this is about citizen engagement and the work of committees, and it might be specifically to the Transport Committee, which is the one I'm on, but because we get schemes in different areas of the city that we put in transport infrastructure, we obviously go out to communicate with the citizens. And there isn't a formal working group or any co-opted members or anything like that, but we go out and members of the committee go out, and we are actively working with the officers to change the way the communications around these schemes are done. So is that something that counts as citizen engagement?
In response to that, I think it does definitely, and I think what would be great is if we can use some of that as part of this conversation, so we can take examples from specific policy committees to look at, because there's not one method of doing this and doing it right or doing it well, there'd be standards we'd want to apply definitely, but there's some really good examples, potentially some good examples there about how you've done that, particularly around schemes and probably TROs as well, transport regulation orders and that sort of thing. Yeah, great.
Any other comments? Oh, Shalit?
Sorry, going back to what councillor Jones said earlier about the really good practice in Page Hall with talking to people, with working with all sorts of groups. Where does that feed in, Mark? As in, is that just good practice sitting there and nobody knows about it? Or does it feed into the lack? Or is it just good practice in its own sense and nobody need, you know, we're just not going to tell anybody, we're going to keep it to ourselves? Because if it's that good, we ought to be taking it somewhere and saying, this is a really good way of working.
Mark, here.
Good question. From my own point, I fed that through to our lap chair, and obviously raising it, and Laurie's response does show that the town hall officers, for want of a better phrase, sorry for my stupidity and clumsiness in that, are aware of it, but, you know, beyond the immediate locality, I don't think most people would know of those community voice groups that have been established by officers. So it is good practice, but I think that for the wider public, nobody knows about it. And it's a shame, because, yeah, there is the voice that we as elected members should represent for the community, but there's also a lot of, our officers are there to represent the community as well, because that's why they work for the council, presumably in my own mind. So, yeah, I'm not sure it is out there, I'm not sure it is shared, which is one of the reasons I want to bring forward some kind of best-case studies of where we could do and should do better.
Just wanted to agree with you.
Thank you. I'll just sort of cast my own comment, if I may, on that, and I think it's really important that we capture this either by asking all members of things they know about when we do our initial ask of members, but also that we then make sure we capture that when we're talking about community engagement, when we're doing that piece of work, because we don't want important evidence to be missed, and so I think it's really important.
Yeah, I mean, from what Mark describes about the situation in Page Hall, it sounds an excellent way of working, and that's been developed over a period of time, it's not just been put into place, it's been developed by the interaction between officers, councillors, and members of the public and the community. I think it's unique to Page Hall, and that's maybe a good thing, but it absolutely is good practice that should be shared. That doesn't mean to say it's totally transferable to another area, but I think it just shows how, you know, engagement with the public and the community is sometimes quite messy, because, you know, we've got a group of people who don't follow the rules of a committee when they are interacting with people in an engagement meeting or a consultation meeting, and I think we just bear that one in mind. But there's probably lots of good practice across the city. You know, Christine mentioned before about the transport issues, and I know there's been, they're always contentious, but there's a lot of extremely good informal engagement goes on across the city in all sorts of different ways. And the lack, again, you go to a lack meeting, people don't follow necessarily the rules of a committee meeting when the community will tell you straight exactly what they believe and what they think, and we have to manage that whilst giving people their right to say whatever they want in their own particular ways, and transfer that back into whichever committee or whichever part of the council it needs to go.
Thank you, Mary. Mark, do you just want to come back and then we'll...
Yeah, not on that point, it's a separate point, so I don't know whether Laurie wants to...
Oh, right. Laurie, do you want to come back on that point and then we'll...
Thank you, Chair, just really briefly. This is hugely helpful, just to say, in terms of the wider issues we're trying, well, the wider approach we're trying to take in terms of thinking about how we get better at that community involvement, community engagement approach with our communities, not just by the council, because that's exactly the wrong way to go about it. But maybe there's a conversation we should have, because this report could be an opportunity to try and capture some of those really good examples that are taking place in other aspects, because obviously, looking at it through the committee lens itself is quite, is very, very narrow. And I think there's, taking that example and knowing the context around that as well, it's almost how we use that as a sort of exemplar of how you do it, and Mary, and councillor Lee's absolutely right here about, it's not, it's very specific to Page Hall, but all the practice and the way that people have gone about doing that with communities is fantastic in terms of the competencies and the approaches taken, which we do need to build upon. So that's, it's really helpful. So obviously, yes for this and to bring it here as well, but I'd like to use it elsewhere, and maybe we should have a follow-up conversation if that's all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, you want to say something else?
Yes, yeah, I'll resist the urge to go back to that one. It's the answers to public questions and petitions at the committees and such like that, that was something I wanted to kind of come back on here, because obviously, we've had questions today, and Laurie's provided answers to that. So in the old system, and this is something I've not witnessed specifically in the new system, officers would usually formulate a kind of response to public questions, and then as a portfolio holder, you would hopefully sense-check those questions before they went out to the public, and maybe do some amendments to them to make sure the language feels more appropriate. Under the new system, I kind of see that the burden of some of that officer support would fall on the Chair of the committee. But the one thing I'm not necessarily sure of, and maybe because we've not had particularly enough questions at our committee at this moment, is when do we allow the committee to reflect on the questions specifically? So we've had that today, and Laurie gave his responses to the public questions, but it wasn't then opened up to the committee members to then maybe add statements to them other than in supplementary engagement in the following processes, and that may or may not be appropriate depending on the agenda. So it's how do we allow those responses? And specifically for me, I would say that what my experience would be is that people assume, the wider population assume that as councillors, we are the council. We are, but we're not, because we are their representatives on the council, and the council is also the officers. And it's the engagement between elected members and the officers that's really, really critical here. I don't want to, I'm cautious here of making it so that it becomes like an antagonistic, a kind of confrontational process, which it isn't, although sometimes we may have difference of opinions. But how do we start to make sure that those questions from the public are more widely answered from a whole council and a whole member context, rather than just an officer context or maybe a lead chair context?
Thank you. I mean, obviously, sometimes there are questions about items on the agenda, so that will happen, but Laurie, do you want to comment, or anybody else want to comment? Jason?
Yeah, I think it's something we could definitely feed into the review, because it's obviously quite, despite a process involved in actually how we get better at responding and making timely responses to public questions, but actually, your point about giving the committee time to reflect on the issues that have been raised in a question is probably quite important, and we need to think about how we might make time and space and do that in the committees.
Joe, you want to comment?
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, obviously, Mark was on my committee, and we did recently have a meeting which attracted a number of questions. I'm not sure that we actually got the procedure right on Wednesday. I turned to the meeting expecting specific answers to have been drafted for me by officers, and it hadn't happened, and I'm not quite sure why it hadn't happened. I think it's somewhere, some link in the chain didn't work the way it should have done, so. As it turned out, the answer that, look, the issue raised will be considered later in the meeting when we discuss that report, was adequate for nearly all of those. But, you know, I am conscious that we didn't really give good service on that occasion. So, yeah, I mean, I think, I agree with what's been said, but I think, yeah, I understood the process to be much as it was before, the old system where a committee chair would have an answer provided and briefed, and have time to, you know, to review that, which didn't happen. I think there's a larger question in terms of, oh, yeah, so the other thing about that process is that a lot of questions came in writing, and I was expecting those to be circulated to the members of the committee, because there was a lot of kind of argument in that question that was relevant to the items coming up later in the agenda. And again, that, you know, there weren't sufficient copies for the whole committee to see that, which was unfortunate. They were circulated by email before the meeting, so those members who read their emails got all that, but otherwise, they got my summary of it from the Chair, which really wasn't ideal. So, yeah, I think I agree, I think I'm agreeing with what Mark has said, but there is particularly the question part of the meeting in terms of its attempt to influence the subject of the meeting, and then there's another slightly different thing, is the question part of the meeting where people come with their own items that are not related to the agenda that's coming up, and they both need to be handled, and they need to possibly be handled in slightly different ways. So we need to think about that, and I am conscious of that. You know, we have the strict, I regard it as a strict limit of 30 minutes for public questions, we did just about stick to that, although it almost went wrong because we weren't, I wasn't entirely clear who had turned up. I thought I had three members of the public who had turned up, and I was rationing their time, and it turned out there were another two, so there were five, so we only just got them in in the half hour. So, yeah, I think the whole thing needs nailing down, I think possibly, you know, an idiot's guide to everything that we all need to know about how we deal with public questions might be quite useful, so that all the links in the chain, including myself, know exactly, you know, chapter and verse, you know, what a member of the public is going to get in response to their question.
Thank you, Joe. Any more comments, Don?
Thank you, Chair. Far be it from me, it's just councillor needs an idiot's guide, but he makes an important point there, because included in the participation, there's the aspect of formal participation routes, but there's also the different aspect of how, as Joe says, how you treat them, because there are perhaps more appropriate routes for questioners who've come to contribute to a particular item on the agenda and interact at that point, rather than ask a general question and provoke a general response. And I think it's that that we need to, we mention here formal participation routes in the scope, but we also need to look at not just the routes, but the appropriateness at any given time of when, rather than asking questions at a block in the beginning, if someone asks something pertinent to an item on the agenda, is it more appropriate that they're allowed to engage at that point, even though it makes it more complicated and complex? I don't know. But if we're serious about allowing that participation, then we can't just trundle along a given route. I've probably just made it a lot more complicated, Joe, but it's just trying to talk round it and share my experience.
If I may, if I may, Chair, apologies. I mean, for the June meeting in Wastes Street, we did plan to do exactly that. I mean, I wasn't able to chair the meeting because I had Covid, but in the planning for the meeting, we recognised a number of questions related to, but not all questions related to one of the items, and we apportioned the 30 minutes we had to questions at the beginning, and then moved those questions to that item. So, but, you know, that was a sore test of the 30-minute limit, I mean, that's the thing, and I think we need, if we are giving the public an expectation of what they're going to get, then we're going to have to, we should have a policy as to what to do if what we want to give them doesn't fit in 30 minutes, really, rather than just saying, well, it's a 30-minute, you know, it's a 30-minute limit, and there you go. But, yeah, no, I think there's possible within rules, it flexibly within the Chair's powers to do that, but it's a point well made.
I just want to comment on this particular...
Can I just come in on one point on that? And that public questions, it goes back to the point raised by councillor Jones about a number of discussions or a number of answers to public questions. The public often come for an answer and an understanding of what the council's doing. I think we need to consider whether that, and we don't need to resolve this today, but I would make the point that we need to consider whether the public understanding of what the council is doing is enhanced by having a number of different answers or a different discussion, rather than a single response. But I just raise that as something that we need to consider when we're looking at how we deal with these things.
Okay, so, I mean, that's, public questions is certainly going to be something we're going to have to look at then as part of our review, but we've obviously already got some good pointers there to start the discussion. And I presume that when we ask councillors for their, when we ask all our councillors and officers for their views, that needs to be a sort of prompt to ask about that. Laurie, do you want to carry on?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that conversation there, I think it was really helpful, and I think there's definitely something about public questions and that process around that. In fact, it certainly is, a lot of the conversation we've just had is in one of Ruth Hubbard's longer questions that was submitted earlier, particularly around where answers come from and the promptness of those answers and appropriateness and the timeliness of them as well. So we can, I think we should capture all that and then think about how we best do that through the review. Could we move on to the next slide, please? Thank you. So this was another aspect of the scope that was set out in June, and originally with full council. My initial reflection on this was, I think it was a sort of, to be used as a sort of a more catch-all, unless anybody, any member's got a better... My initial reflection on this was, I think it was a sort of, to be used as a sort of a more catchall unless anybody, any member's got a better memory of this one than I have, of anything that would nationally or locally significantly change the context within which we're operating. And I think we're particularly thinking about finance and political context plus legislative change if our duties and responsibilities change through that. My initial take is that this may not be relevant right now, but I'd be welcome, I'd welcome thoughts from members because nothing particularly springs to mind in terms of what we would focus on. Obviously, we would never do this, we would never do a review that is ignorant of the wider political and local context and national context we're working in. But we'd probably capture that in the narrative rather than using it as a key line of inquiry. But that would, I'd welcome steer on that bit.
Any comments?
Thank you, Chair. I just wonder if the political context isn't something we've already mentioned. We have a hung council at the moment and perhaps if we don't have one, is that a political context? And do we need to make sure our system will work in both ways, in both systems?
I think that's right. I think what I'm suggesting is we probably don't need a whole area of scope around it. I think we would capture that because of the things we've discussed already in the kind of workings of the system, if that's okay. Fantastic. That's excellent. Thank you very much for that. We'll just move on to the next element of this. I've just suggested here some other things we need to consider. We've alluded to these, so I'll skip through them. One is the timeliness of this. We said we'd review it after six months. So we've had around about two rounds of the committee system in terms of meeting process. And obviously this will carry on during the process, as the review progresses. So we will learn as we go a little bit. But we have to recognise that some of this is still bedding in and we're still learning how we work in this new system. But it does give us a chance to reflect on teething problems and address them now, but also think how we can improve our practice across the whole system. The second point is around the political context, which councillor Gilligan just alluded to. Really, there's something around, we are operating in a system of no overall control and with three parties involved in the administration, which may impact and has positive and negative challenges in this. But also, as we've discussed earlier on, there may be elements of this which would be different if we weren't in a home council scenario as well. And we'll probably end up identifying some of those political and system behaviours separately maybe. And just finally, there's, we are likely to have an LGA peer challenge in the autumn to winter period of this year. So that this is the thing where a team of peers from external, from other councils, usually led by an external chief executive and usually involving members from cross-parties and senior officers. For example, somebody who's a section 151 finance officer from another council, somebody who's a senior director from another council, to come and look at our approach corporately about how we operate as a city council within four or five or six parameters. This is going to happen at some point in the autumn winter and therefore there's an opportunity to kind of line these things up together a little bit. Particularly, I have no doubt, I have no doubt that when the peer team are involved in conversations with our local, with members, with officers, with local stakeholders and partners, the operation of our governance will undoubtedly come up as part of those conversations and undoubtedly come up about how we operate, how effective we are at decision making. There's an opportunity here to just, to maybe do something, collect with the committee and with the peer team to do some of that feedback and ask them to look at some areas for us maybe, or certainly ask them to feedback to us to complement our review. Anything they learned through their, through the peer team's activity in Sheffield. So this is just something to be aware of as part of this and we'll look to see if we can arrange something where members of this committee can meet with the peer team when they're in Sheffield and hopefully at some point in the autumn winter.
Any comments people want to make on that? I mean, I would just like to say, I think from the point of view of the peer challenge, I think we perhaps need to think if there's anything particular we want to ask them to look at. I'm sure they'll pick up stuff, but if we think of anything, then I think we need to sort of make sure we highlight that by the next meeting. Diane?
Thank you, Chair. It's just something that occurred to me when I was listening to Laurie. I mean, one of the things that would be really hard for us to, members, officers, to have an opinion on in the whole of this process is how the process and nature of the relationship between officers and members needs to change in the transition from a committee system, you know, from a cabinet system to a committee system. And that might be something that a peer review could be quite useful, that external view on that to say, well, actually you could enhance or improve that relationship or move it on to the next step by doing this or that. It's hard for us to, it's navel gazing when we do it. It's useful input when outsiders do it.
Thank you for that, Dan. Any other comments?
Thank you, councillor Hurst. That's a great idea. It is quite hard for us to think about that objectively, I guess, within the system. So I will feed that into the work that's happening to support the LGA and prep for that review. That's really helpful. Thank you. Just, and just to reflect back, we mentioned these at the start, but members will remember that we, as a committee, we utilise the work that had been undertaken by overview and scrutiny management committee at the end of 2019 with some principles for governance in Sheffield. And we sort of iterated and developed these in the process around the transition to committees. So we set out five quite high level design principles for our system. And these were sort of underpinned by a longer list of about, I can't quite remember the number, there was a long list. There was a long list of principles. As part of the work we do, we should use this as a sort of our little kind of sentence check and our test against ourselves to see how we're doing on this. Now, they were deliberately meant to be quite kind of high level and they're also not meant to be very wordy. If you remember, we had a long conversation about how we made them plain English and accessible to people. But we should use these in the work we do and the products we develop as a result of the review and use it as a sort of a test. They may, as we've suggested in the June report, could be underpinned by some metrics, but also some areas of inquiry that we may want to look at. But I think we've already done that as part of the conversation we've had on the scope and we're just going to think about these things alongside that as well. Is that all okay? So just, just very briefly, I don't think we want to get into this too much here because I think, one, we need to come back and set out a scope in more detail. But how we're going to undertake this review, I just want to spend a couple of minutes just outlining what we think we need to do, who the core voices are in this. And then get to the record and talk about recommendations from this meeting today. So firstly, we'll develop, we'll take away all your comments and everything you've said and we'll undertake some of that pre-work with members, state officers and citizens as well. And which will help us finesse what we've got in terms of the scope. Everything you've contributed today has been hugely valuable and pointed out where we had gaps and things we needed to think about as well. But I've no doubt your colleagues in your groups have some other additional thoughts in this which we need to capture. What we're going to do to undertake it and how we're going to go about it, well, the who. I think I've tried to capture here some of the core voices, the key people we need to involve in some of this. Citizens and stakeholders, elected members and officers, but also our partnering organisations in the city. So VCF partners, anchor institutions, businesses and potentially other councils. Because obviously we're a member of things like South Yorkshire Combat Authority, we're a member of core cities. Some of our partners that we network with regularly may have a view on whether that's changed our, it's changed our way of working potentially. But we can certainly test that and we've got routes to do that. I've been quite vague and sort of vague in the methods right now because I think we need to develop this in a bit more detail now that we've, once we've got the scope clear. But there's definitely going to be some three bits to this. There's one thing around the desk research and using the analysis we undertook as part of the transition to committees programme to think about whether that, all that stands up and there were qualitative aspects to that, there were financial costs to that as councillor Hurst asked a question about earlier. We need to reflect back on that, but also probably undertake a larger, a wider call for evidence around some of this. So that will give everybody in the city, including members and partners, an opportunity to feed in thoughts about how it's operating. We need to design that research piece in a much more, in a much more clear way than we've done thus far. But the scope bit will shape that for us. Second bit is around facilitated conversation. So I think, for example, we need to find a space for specific policy committees, for example, to do some, have conversations with us about how it's working for them. Recognising it'll be distinct across the network of policy committees. We also need to think about things like our regulatory committees, but also members, just through the wider group of members who aren't on those committees as well. So I think people lack chairs. So we need to facilitate conversations. We also probably should, we need to do that with citizens as well. What worked quite well during the transition was having a mix of hybrid and in-person events or settings where we could talk to citizens and invite people to come and have conversations with us. And they'll be very open and kind of semi-structured to enable people to give their views. But we need to think through how we do that over the coming months. And then also suggesting, Emily suggested that one of the things we could do is use these meetings as almost evidence hearings like we did in the governance committee's work to develop the system as well. So we can develop those in a timetable for that probably after Christmas really. So giving us a window to do the call for evidence and then start honing that down into evidence hearings for the committee where we can ask questions but also invite people to come and talk to us as well. Does that all feel right? I've put the question that's just off the screen on this side, but it, does that feel right to members? It's very high level this at the minute and we'll detail this and be more specific about how we're going to do it with a timetable, a proper process for it. But I just wanted to get your sense about whether we were doing the right things, whether we were in areas where you think we need to, how we approach this in the right way to enable people to have a voice.
Christine first, please.
Thank you, Jo. Yeah, overall it feels right. I think, I was just wondering, is there going to be something like an email box? So people that don't actually get to be face to face can send you their comments? Because not everybody will have the time or want to come, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. I think one of the things we'll probably look at using is citizen space as a way of people being able to easily give us the information that they want to give us. We'll bring that detail back to you in, for the November 10th meeting. But absolutely, we'll try and provide a range of options so that it can be as easy or people can give as much time to it as they want. It can be just filling in a box on a citizen space survey if they need.
Penny?
Thanks, Chair. If we're talking about asking members of the public to come and talk to us, is there some way we can do it in a better environment than getting them to sit in front of a committee and talk to them? Because that puts so many people off. I mean, it's much better if you can do that, if you're communicating with members of the public, you can do it with a less formal environment. I'm making people smile. Sorry, Shaunad, you're smiling at me. But we've done this in other ways in the past where we've met in a more informal setting and done it more like a planning inquiry. And we've got more out of, I've got more out of that sort of meeting than I have somebody sitting with their notes and talking at me. Would the committee consider something like that? Thank you, Chair.
Yes, please. I'm no fan of sitting here talking into a microphone either, to be honest. I think that would be ideal and actually there's quite a lot of equalities aspects to that as well. So coming and working in a, sitting in a large meeting room like this is not exactly attractive to people. But it also does, probably, is not a very inclusive way of doing it essentially. Also, we have to reflect that we're going into a winter, we're going into a period where we get worse conditions, worse weather, dark nights and things. So there may be some other opportunities to think about whether we do this in sort of hybrid ways as well. People can engage in all sorts of different settings right now and I think we can find much more creative channels than just being sat in the council chamber.
Thank you, Shaunad.
Sorry, that was me smiling at Penny for those people watching on TV. I was just going to say we have other rooms within the town hall which are much more comfortable and relaxed. We've got that big downstairs space behind the silver display. Even our committee rooms are smaller or the conference room where people actually sit around a big table. But there's no reason why there shouldn't be smaller meetings out in other places as well. You know, you could do one in each ward if you were that inclined. And I know that there is bad weather, but there's also nothing like actually talking to people rather than having people appear on the screen. And also not everybody, you know, when we say not everybody is comfortable coming to something like this, which completely get, not everybody wants to be on Zoom or anything else. We've all got used to it. Most people, it doesn't impinge on their lives. So just loads of different ways, Laurie. And just make sure, of course, that there is cake at every meeting.
Not get the comments in. Anybody else want to comment? Mike?
In terms of what we cover overall, we're in this for 10 years. And I think we should come out of this with some sort of framework about how we're going to review governance on an ongoing basis. Whether it be annually, certainly we're just six months into this. So I'm sure in a year's time we'll reflect back and say, well, actually we should do this, that and the other. So I'm sure we would look at a review in 12 months, but then thereafter, what would we want to do?
Any other comments? I'm looking around, I can't see anybody waving at me. Okay, Laurie, do you want to? Mark, one.
Just reflecting on something Mike just said there, and I don't know whether it was in terms, we are in this for a minimum of 10 years, we're absolutely sure. But if we get this right, then there's no reason it can't exist into perpetuity. Should we go forward or we may decide to go for a different system? I don't know. But I was just kind of mindful of the optics of that one and I'm sure it's not how it was meant, would look like that. Oh, we're enjoying this while we have to. That's not the case. We're actually actively engaged in a process that we want to make governance of the city better. I just want to make sure the public understand that all of us here are thinking that. Thanks, Sue.
Thank you, Mark. Mike, do you want to quickly come back?
Yeah, what's driving my thinking is that if organisational structures change within the council, we may well want to revisit the committee system and look at restructuring. So therefore, I think it's ongoing, as you know, the review will not just finish once we've done this one.
Okay, any further comments? Okay, Laurie, do you want to move on? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Absolutely. I think the key principle here is continuous improvement, isn't it? And we can, we know that this will develop over time, we'll get better at it, what our behaviours will, we'll get more accustomed to using it, using the system. But having that opportunity to constantly look and test ourselves to make sure we're doing the best we possibly can be through the system is absolutely right. This just outlines a quick, a basic timetable and obviously we will come back with more detail on this. I think the landing point was to try and aim for full council because we're reporting back to full council for the next AGM so that we've got a set of recommendations. So that's the sort of the working back point, if you will. Our initial take on this is that we probably need to really focus on to try and structure the committee's time and make sure we've got a clear timeline of what we're going to do. We've got a period now from the, when the report, from the review launches in November to probably around Christmas time or maybe after Christmas and do as much evidence gathering as we can. That involves involving everybody we've talked about today. We then probably will want to consider how we hone all that information down and understand what we've taken in and then probably run the more formal evidence hearings with the committee after that so we can bring aspects of voice and perspective together. So then we can really focus on those key lines of inquiry after Christmas in January, February time. And then obviously aiming to try and have some of the draft implementation, draft review by February so the committee's got time to consider that. And also respond to the post-implementation report. So we'll look at that report as we develop it. But also any proposed changes to the constitution because obviously there's a sort of, there's a legal process to this. If there are things we have to do, we'll know, we'll need support from colleagues in our, in our legal and governance team to try and make sure we've got that all ready for the May meeting. So broadly speaking, that's a timetable. We were going to, we'll set that out in more detail, but particularly learning from everything you've said today so that we can start looking at how the, the how, the method aspect of it fits within that timeframe. Does that feel okay to members?
Any, any comments from anybody? Okay, so last page then.
Yes, and just, just on to the last slide. This is the last substantial item in the pack. So this is the recommendations for the, for the governance committee. And I think, I think David may have an additional one to add to the bottom of this because there is, there's some formalities that I wasn't, I hadn't had. So firstly to discuss and comment on the proposed approach, which I think we've done. And I think that's probably okay to, for, for, I think we've covered that often, certainly we've taken everything you've said on board. The second point was agreed to set up a working group. I alluded on the first slide to about the, how the committee wants to work through this. My suggestion is we're going to need, taking councillor Leveries' point from how the committee's work in terms of working groups, we're going to need something like that to give us something more frequent than, than rather than like a two monthly cycle of committee, of governance committee meetings. So with, 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 if, if that's all right, Chair, I'd like to propose that we set up a working group if that's okay. But obviously open that up to, to members to, to consider. And then just finally, we just need to agree, take that approach that we've set out here to agree the approach to the review and then agree that we'll commission, commission ourselves, Emily and myself and David to go away and start looking at the arrangements, get the pre-work in place and bring back a report for the next committee that says, sets out that in more, in much more detail.
Thank you. I think David wants to just propose another recommendation and then I'll go through them one at a time.
It's, it's a bit of a formality as such in that, that there is no published recommendation in an officer report before this. So I think we, we actually need a resolution to be proposed and seconded to take this forward. And noting, as Laurie has, has already noted, that one of these is an action that we've probably already done, I have taken the liberty while I've been doing, listening to the discussion of drafting a proposed resolution that might be suitable, but can be subject to amendment, which is the governance committee notes the presentation today on behalf of the interim director of legal and governance, notes and agrees the outlined scope and today's discussion as the starting point for further consideration to define the scope of the review, agrees to set up a working group of all governance committee members to meet regularly and support the ongoing process of the review within the proposed timetable and request that the interim director of legal and governance produce a report on the more detailed arrangements that, for the review to include scope and arrangements for engagement to be submitted at the next meeting of the committee.
Thank you. Did everybody get that or would you like that read out again?
I just, there's one comment. I think you said set up a working group of all governance committee members. That isn't a working group, is it?
We, that's what we did before, to be fair. We had a whole committee working group, so yes, you can. It's just, it ceases to be a decision-making committee and just works, but you can involve all members.
I apologise.
That's not, not apologising. Did anybody want David to read that through again? Or, and if you're happy with that, can I have a proposer? Dan, thank you. And a second, Jo, thank you. Would we like to vote on that? All in favour? Excellent. That's lovely. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there any other comments or any other formal business that we need to deal with? Or any other comments that people want to make in formally? So in that case, I think that brings that item to a conclusion. And just then finally to note that the next meeting is on the 10th of November. And I shall close the meeting. Thank you very much.